Regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, May 27, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, which has been duly noticed in two places, including the city's website, in accordance with the requirements of R.S.A. 91A. The prayer tonight will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman O'Brien will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Alderman Moran.
I'm here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
President.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening by Zoom is Mayor Donches. And in-house, we have Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton and Deputy Corporation Counsel Celia Leonard. Mayor, did you wish to address the board?
Yes, Madam President. Can you hear me?
I can.
All right. Well, I wanted to join. I'm out in California, visiting my daughter and her family. But I wanted to join by Zoom because I know the board is considering the budget tonight. So it's an important meeting. I want to say first that to thank the members of the Budget Committee for devoting so much time and attention to the annual budget of the city of Nashville. As I said from the beginning, reasonable people can disagree about the details of a budget. And the Budget Committee has recommended a few changes, which to me seem reasonable, and so I have no reason to take issue with them. I'd also like to thank the members of the staff who worked hard to make the do the budget, principally John Griffin, Tim Cummings, and Megan Karen. Also, as you know, Madam President, we sought to ask the departments to hold their operating budgets, excluding these extraordinary items over which neither we nor they have any control, to a 3% operating budget. And all of the departments, based on the budget I submitted to you, were able to do that. Now, we are this year hit by some extraordinary items, which we really can't control. We've gone through those a few times, but the largest of which are the, first, the escalation in healthcare costs, not over 9%, which amounts to $4.1 million. That's a $4.1 million increase. There is the, the school department was hit with the major increase in the amount of money that they need to provide to first students to meet their legal obligation to transport students. That was a $1.8 million increase this year, which represented nearly 20% of, nearly a 20% increase. We also, at least so far, we're hoping the delegation will give us some relief, the county delegation, the members of the legislature in the county. But the county commissioners have sent us a communication indicating that they've proposed a 23% tax increase. We, the city, and all cities and towns in Hillsborough County, sent a big check to the county. Last year was 13, or in the current fiscal year, it was 13 million. If the commissioner's budget goes through, that would go to about 16 million. We, of course, that's not final, because we will ask the delegation to reduce that obligation so that it becomes more manageable for city government and for our property taxpayers. And we, of course, also made the decision, which I think was a reasonable one, to begin incorporating the purchase of equipment, which we call big, big items of equipment, like garbage trucks and plow trucks, and school department, fire department, police department vehicles, everything, into the budget, including the SURF, that's what we call it, SURF into the budget for the first, into the budget, rather than handling it through surplus at the end of the year. And we're going to handle that through a two-year phase in. So there's $2.5 million of capital equipment money in the budget for the, really for the first time in a number of years. So with all those extraordinary items, the budget is up a little bit more than we'd like, but the departments have been able to keep themselves to 3%. And before I conclude, I do want to thank the departments for their cooperation in this, and also all of the city employees who, you know, from top to bottom, who work very hard to serve the citizens of Nashville. I believe this year, like every year, we try to reach a reasonable balance between the cost of services and what we think we can afford. The main element, 75% of the budget is wages and benefits for our employees, because we are a service organization, and we need to continue to provide good services to our residents. And I believe that's what our residents, at least the majority, are looking for us to do. So I believe the budget that I propose to you, and which you are considering tonight with the amendments, continues quality services at a reasonable cost. So with that, Madam President, again, I will just thank everybody involved. And I will conclude unless there are questions for me.
Response to the remarks by the mayor. Seeing none? You're all set, Mayor?
All right. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings.
None.
Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Sam Dharfi, AICP Planning Manager, regarding referral from the Board of Aldermen on resolutions, R-25-159, R-25-160, R-25-161, R-25-166, and the amended petition for street discontinuance regarding a portion of Veterans Memorial Parkway.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have two speakers signed up. Paula Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Paula Johnson. I live at 15 Westbourne Drive. I'm sorry I didn't get to the Budget Review Committee. I kind of spaced it. I'm trying to get back with my life since I broke my kneecap. I'm a little bit concerned here with what's going on with this budget. Mr. Griffin said our taxes are going to go up about $6 million in surplus, which will going to be about a 6% increase in our tax bill come December. I don't know about all of you, but I keep coming here and advocating for our senior citizens, not as elderly, our senior citizens here. We just can't do it anymore. And to see how the money is being spent here, I just had a conversation with Dr. Andre about the fact that we have 9,701 children in our school system. And back before COVID, we were over 11,000, 12,000 kids. Our population is coming down quick. People talking about it on the street, population's coming down, but the costs are still rising. We've got to get a handle on all this. You know, how much more can we take on the spending? You know, the mayor talked about a 3% increase. School district got a 4% increase, it's coming down to. Alderman Lopez wanted a 4.7, because that's what the school district wanted. That's unheard of. And so I stand here, and I'm saying, we have to change something here. Because I remember Alderman Klee said that we're a very giving community. We're a very generous community. Yes, we are with other people's money. But we're not generous when it came to increase the income level for married couples. And unfortunately, I couldn't make it that night. And I had asked if I may Zoom, because I couldn't walk. And I was told no. But I think it's pretty sad that when the mayor can Zoom, all of you can Zoom, and members of the city staff can Zoom, but people with a disability cannot Zoom. When you have all the ways to Zoom here in the chamber, you can hook anybody up. And wonder if that's a violation under ADA, because you get federal dollars here. And I've been trying to figure out, did you get federal dollars to do this room over? Because if you do, reasonable accommodations for people who cannot walk, cannot come into this chamber, to be able to voice their opinion about this budget the way I'm doing it here. I think it's a real shame. I think the city, in my opinion, school district didn't like people with a disability. They had to rewrite a policy that if you couldn't wear a mask, you had to be able to treat people with respect. I wonder who filed that complaint with the Office of Civil Rights. Thank you.
Bill Ferio.
My name is Bill Ferio. My address is number 35 Indian Rock Road. So I did have the opportunity to attend the public hearing a few days ago. And I listened to the mayor present his budget. And a couple of things he said early on, he said that taxes, property taxes are high. And he said people are struggling. I didn't say that. He said that. Property taxes are high, and people are struggling. He didn't say property taxes are reasonable for those services we get. He didn't say people are achieving. He said people are struggling. So if people are struggling, then that kind of means the city, it does mean the city is struggling. And that's a problem, if the city is struggling. So within his presentation that night, and in the big budget book, I didn't see any solutions or any opportunities that he presented on how to solve that problem of the city struggling. So I had the opportunity to ask a bunch of questions that evening. And based on that, I offered a couple of opportunities. One was based on coming up with maybe some different way of budgeting for the Unfield staffing that several of the departments have. And that didn't go over too well. So I also offered an opportunity to add more fidelity to the budgeting of the electricity, which is a huge cost, a huge budget to the city, the electricity. But there didn't seem to be much motivation in working that as well. It didn't seem to go over too well. So, okay, so a couple of other things that I would talk about this evening. Developing a budget and managing a budget is not a trivial task, are not trivial tasks. And a lot of people just can't do it. They don't want to do it. They're not motivated to do it. They don't have any incentive to do it. And I think a lot of that is based on their backgrounds. For example, if a guy's a scientist, he doesn't want to develop budgets and manage budgets. He wants to go do science stuff. If a guy's like a chef or a baker, he wants to make the food. That's what he wants to do. He doesn't want to be dealing with budgets. If a guy's an attorney, he probably not that interested in dealing, making budgets. He wants to sue guys and defend guys. This city hires a lot of consultants, specialists, and experts to do stuff that they don't have the in-house skills to do. They don't have the in-house expertise to do. Maybe you should consider contracting or hiring a budget guy, a budget person, a person that could step in, take away most of the responsibility of the budgeting from the mayor and the Aldermen, and a guy that could solve that problem of the city crippling, the city's struggling. Maybe that's what you need. And I'll just offer one other thing. The whole spending cap, budget cap, tax cap, whatever you want to call it.
Time.
Thank you.
Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award utility revaluation services.
Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to accept, place on file, and approve a multi-year contract for updating the values and statistical revaluation for utility properties with Sansui Associates in the amount of $156,000. $39,000 annually. Funding will be through Department 132 assessing. Fund, General Fund 53, Professional and Technical Services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding million-dollar contract award transit operation services.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and approve Amendment Number Five with First Transit Incorporated for a 3% increase in pricing from the prior year contract in the amount not to exceed $2,900,000. Funding will be through Department 186 Transportation Fund Grants 55 Other Services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding million-dollar contract award structural repairs for the parking garages.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and award a contract for repairs to the Elm Street and High Street parking garages with Whiting Turner Contracting Company in the amount of $9,505,399. Funding will be through Department 106 Administrative Services Fund Bond/54 Property Services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Mine's more just like a comment. As the chairman of the Infrastructure Committee, these garages are in sad need of repair. And it's getting to the point that structurally, in the future, in the very short future, they could be unsafe. So money needs to go into it to repair it. There's been years of neglect. I compliment the mayor and this board in the new ethic of thinking, we got to take care of our infrastructure. Because if we don't, it's got a rotaway right in front of us. So we have to address it. So I totally support this, and I hope you do, too. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries. Petitions.
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Cable Television Advisory Board, Oscar Velasis, new appointment, term to expire June 10, 2028. 76 Voview Avenue, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. Keefe Auditorium Commission, Dennis Snyder, new appointment, term to expire June 10, 2028. 32 Clearview Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the May 8, 2025 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 7, 2025 Joint Meeting of the Committee on Infrastructure and the Board of Police Commissioners be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the May 7, 2025 Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 7, 2025 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the May 19, 2025 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. And there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 5, 2025 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
None.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-25-143 amended relative to the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget for the city of Nashua, General Enterprise Special Revenue and Grants Funds.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion to amend R-25-143 by replacing it with a golden rod copy of the amendments made at the Budget Review Committee. And I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dowd.
There were just a handful of motions made and accepted. The first motion by Alderwoman Kelly was to reinsert the two community health workers into the public health. That amounted to an addition of $177,050, including all their benefits. Motion was then made by Alderman Thibodeau to reduce the PNC fund by that same $177,050, which then, the two motions had a negative impact on the end budget. There was a motion to transfer to Community Benefit Fund by Alderwoman Kelly, $300,000. And that was explained, it's a wash on the budget, because it's money that was realized by the dams, and the money needed someplace to be resided. So this motion creates that place for the funds to go. And then there was a motion by Alderman O'Brien to adjust the fireman chief's pay by $89,196 to take care of the inequity in their department. We had actually passed that last year and it never got put in place. So this is to take care of that this year. So the total add to the budget was $389,196. The new general fund appropriation is now $361,072,868. And if there are no other questions, that is what's on the amendment.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Alderman Dowd did a great job of explaining the conversation at the Budget Committee. Just wanted to note that the monies for the $300,000 was actually from the adder funds from the community power, not from the dams.
We're close.
Close.
Okay. You've heard the amendment. Is there discussion on the amendment? Alderman Jettie.
Yes. If I could ask the chairman of the Budget Committee, through you.
Yes.
So the, you said, CFO Griffin said, and you said tonight, that the increase with these amendments, the increase in the budget is $389,196. And so I watched the meeting, and I saw that when Alderwoman Kelly made the addition of the $300,000, she indicated that, and you said tonight, that was a wash. So if it's a wash, why does it increase the budget by $300,000? Why isn't the increase only $89,196, the amount that Alderman O'Brien's motion to provide for increases to the Fire Department Chief, Deputy Chiefs, Assistant Chiefs? And I don't mean to ramble on, but Alderwoman Kelly's initial motion regarding the public health workers was an increase, a total increase with salaries and benefits of $177,050. But Alderman Thibodeau reduced the same amount from the legal, outside legal services budget. So can you explain why doesn't it come out to an increase of $89,196? Why is the $300 added to that if it's a wash?
So rather than me articulating the answer, I'm going to ask on the Treasurer, Don Enright, to step in and answer that question.
Certainly. Don Enright, Treasurer, Tax Collector. Thank you. Thank you for that question. So the reason the $300,000 is an increase to the budget is because it is an appropriation of revenue that was received in fiscal year '25. So we have already received the revenue, but it needs to be appropriated so that we can utilize those funds.
Alderman Jettie.
So thank you. So even though it increases the budget, we've already got the money, so it's not going to increase the tax, the taxes that we need to raise. Is that correct?
Thank you for the question. We have already received it, but the revenues are going to go into our excess proceeds for the year. But in order for us to be able to utilize those funds, we have to appropriate them in the FY '26 budget season.
Alderman Jettie.
I don't mean to be so dense about this, but is that $300,000 something that is going to affect the money that we're raising in taxes this coming year? Or it sounds like you're saying it's not, but could you just confirm that?
Thank you. I will, I'll clarify a little bit more. So the way that it will not raise the taxes is if we add $300,000 to go against the tax rate of excess proceeds at the end of '25. That's the way it won't increase the amount raised by taxation.
Okay. So I take your answer is that, no, it will not increase the taxes. Does anyone disagree with me on that?
That's correct, what you were saying, right? Don, Treasurer Enright?
Thank you. Yes, there is a plan to use the excess proceeds to go against the tax rate. And we can take up to consideration of adding that $300,000 to it, yes. And it will not affect the taxes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion is to amend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I'm going to say, can we get a division? All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Yays have it. Motion passes. Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25-143 as amended.
You've heard the motion? Discussion on that motion. Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a few things to say about this. The citizen that spoke earlier that said, you know, doing a budget isn't trivial is 100% correct. It's a hard process. But the one thing that needs to be corrected there is that the mayor and us as Aldermen aren't sitting down writing the budget. We're not, we're not the ones, we're asking questions about it. We're eventually either approving or denying it. But we're not the ones creating these budget numbers, right? We can put out lines, like I did, to remove the $177,000. But we're not actually going to the departments ourselves and going, okay, let's work your budget, right? None of us are, well, most of us, there might be a few here that have budget experience, but that's not our job. We have CFO Griffin and Don Enright doing that work. They're the budget people. They're the budget people. They go to the departments and they work with the department heads. The department heads all have budget experience. That's why they're department heads. So it is someone that knows what they're doing, doing these budgets. Now, someone may argue they don't like what's in the budget compared to what they want in the budget, but they still know what they're doing when they're creating a budget. They have to figure out how many heads they need, they got to figure out what things they may have to buy this year, and then they got to project what that might be, and they create a budget, and they try to stick to it. I think, you know, the mayor had originally said three and a half, and Budget Committee said make it three, and departments really tried to get down to as bare minimum as you can get and still make sure the services are there for the citizens. And I thought they did a pretty good job. It wasn't easy. We questioned them, you know, as we had our budget meetings, and, you know, things like electricity, I know that was brought up. Well, each department, the electricity is going to be different, and you have to budget it in a way that all of a sudden you don't come up short, and then you have to come back to us for electricity bills, right? So some departments are trying things where they can try to reduce their electricity so they can try to be better at, you know, spending money, right, on electricity, and others, depending on what's going on in a year, it may have to increase. So it's always a little bit of a guess because you also have the electric companies that raise the rate twice a year. Well, you may know what it is now, but you're not going to know necessarily what it is, you know, next year. It could go down because it has gone down in the past, and it could go way up, we don't know. So that's a little bit of some guesswork. No matter how good you are at budgeting, you got to look at the past years and try the best you can to budget that. The other thing with the ghost positions is what it was called at the meeting and what it's been called in the paper. They're not ghost positions. Like the police, for instance, they're trying to hire those positions right now. They're not ghost positions. And if we say, oh, you got to cut them all out right now, they can't hire those positions. And if they want to, they got to come to us to appropriate, which you know how long that takes, it's got to go to the Budget Committee, back to the Board of Aldermen. That person that they're trying to hire will be gone. And right now, they're in a hiring crunch. They're trying to find good police officers. You're not going to be able to do it if you cut all their positions out. You're just not. So I don't find, in a budget season where we had to deal with bus transportation for the schools, increased benefits, and, you know, salaries being 75% of the budget, putting SURF in here, I don't see where there's a lot of fluff that we could just go and cut. To really lower the taxes, you have to take millions out of this budget. If we take $10,000 here, $5,000 here, it's not going to give any tax relief. You have to take millions. Alderman Sullivan tried. He made a good effort trying to get two and a half out of education. That's tough because we don't have line item for that. So we could say take two and a half out, but I don't know, we could try to get them to do what we want, but that's not necessarily going to be the case. So I give them credit because that's the only way you're going to reduce that. The only other way is extreme. You have to cut staff. I don't think most of us want to do that. You have to cut staff. And if we wanted to do a budget that was really, really tight, we'd have to cut staff. So for those who are going to oppose it tonight, I would love to see, you know, maybe some ideas to do something different here because I would love to do something different that makes sense, but I can't see anything from what I went over over the last few weeks. So I just want to put that, I'm going to support it tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for clarification, because changes have been made to this budget, and this is probably for our Corporation Council, we need 10 votes correct in order to pass this budget as amended.
Two-thirds of those present have been voting.
Two-thirds of this, which I think would be 10 correct, because we have 14 here today.
If we have 14, it would still be 10, yes.
It would still be 10. So we need 10 votes in order to pass. Otherwise, we would.
You would not have passed.
We would not pass the budget, and then we would have to take another vote to pass the mayor's budget, or would we just not have a budget?
You have to pass a budget.
We have to pass a budget.
Until you pass a budget.
Okay.
If you revert back, if someone could make a motion to amend, to revert back to as originally proposed by the mayor. If that happened, that would only require a simple majority. Someone might make motions to cut other lines, add to other lines. When you get 10 votes, you pass it. Until you get 10 votes, you have.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate the clarification.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I just want to rise and talk about the work here in the Budget Committee and really urge my colleagues to support this budget. I think there's been a lot of discussion about who makes the budget and where does it come from, and are we doing our due diligence? And I've been on the Budget Committee for eight years. Best advice I ever got was be on the Budget Committee. You learn so much about the city by being on that committee. And every single year, I'm so grateful to go through that, but we sit in this chamber for hours, hours. We're here two, three nights a week through budget season, listening to all of our heads of departments who work really hard to pull these budgets together. I think we, as aldermen, knew that this was going to be an especially hard year, and so we asked for our departments to come in at 3%. And I think that that already started us at a place where we could feel really strongly about the budget that was put in front of us. So I mostly want to leave it at that. I think there was a ton of work that was done, there was a lot of really good discussion. I think I marked my budget book up the most I've ever marked it up, but I think what's in front of us is a really good budget that's fiscally sound and brings the services that everyone in Nashua has wanted to have, and we continue to hear again and again. Let me point out that, one, two people came to our budget hearing, two people. So I think we've done the work here. I'll make one more comment about my specific motion. I like to listen for what the story is, and I know that we've all talked very deeply in this chamber about homelessness, rising homelessness, need of shelter. We've talked about the warming station, and some of the most important workers for that are in our Health Department. And so for me, it was really hard for me to swallow Director Bagley losing two of those critical outreach people. So I worked really hard, not only to figure out what their salaries were, but we actually, like, we did the worst-case scenario for those budgets so that we had enough in there to make sure that they could continue to do that work. So I think that was an incredibly important piece. We offsetted it. Thank you, Alderman Tebow. But I'm really proud of the work that was done on this budget, and I hope that my colleagues will support it.
Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I just want to comment with regards to, one thing that a public speaker had said earlier was that I was supporting 4.7, which is what the district asked for. The district didn't ask for that, the Board of Education did. And the Board of Education is elected citywide, so the City of Nashua elected every current member of the Board of Education. That's the will of the people. And to claim that that's unprecedented, to actually support their request, no, it's not. That's what they're there for. And I think they did their own due diligence, they had pretty lengthy back-and-forth discussions, and it definitely got heated, and they really explored every facet of what they could pull off. So I would support that. If I thought I had 10 votes here, I would make a motion to add it on there because I think, I was part of a group of aldermen who wrote an op-ed about, we need to make sure that our budget is impacting the working-class people of Nashua as most effectively as possible. And I don't think there's anything that does that more than schools. I think those families and the people in our schools are our constituents, and that's the future of Nashua. So I think it's a no-brainer to listen to the Board of Education when they propose what they need. I applaud them for advocating for what the school needs rather than just saying, okay, well, we want to look good in public, so I guess we're just going to cut this, we're going to cut that, so that we don't have people in public comment criticizing us. I think it took courage. I think they very clearly debated the issue, and they didn't just come up with a number out of nowhere. It was based on what they needed for level funding from the previous year, given the context that they had a very difficult bus transportation negotiation. So I would definitely support the Board of Education's position, and I want them to know that I will advocate for it because we should be working with that board, not being afraid they're going to misappropriate things or lose money. So I wanted to clarify that. I also wanted to point out that in the budget meeting, it was brought up and it was mentioned tonight that an effort was made by my colleague to try to save some money, and we found out a topic that I think the Board of Education knows well because if you listen to their meetings, they bring it up frequently. If we cut the paraprofessionals that are due to be hired, that haven't been hired yet, then we're basically consigning ourselves to have to contract those services out at a higher rate. If we can fill those positions, we literally save money. So I understand the effort of trying to save the taxpayers' pain, and I do appreciate the public speaker who mentioned that seniors are struggling because I want to make sure that Nashua remains a place that seniors can continue to be living and that recognizes their life of contributions to the city. That being said, I don't think you should pitch the needs of, sorry, I don't think you should pit the needs of seniors against the needs of children and families. I think we need to find ways to more responsibly budget, and one of those ways is to hire an appropriate number of paraprofessionals by any means possible. And so I think it's important to signal to paraprofessionals, teachers, and education staff that we value them and that Nashua will protect them, and Nashua is a good investment in professionals who are looking to start a career here. So while I wish I could, you know, effectively lead us through adding all of what Board of Education asked for, I think the mayor adjusting his estimate up to 4% is already a victory. The Board of Education won before we ever got to it. So I will be supporting this. And I also wanted to point out that the issue that we also had to address with the Fire Department, we've already voted on that, and we need to follow through on the legislation that accompanies that, but that's not something new. That's a promise we made last year. And I think anybody who's going to reneg on that now, shame on them.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you very much. I will not come as a surprise to anybody that I will not be supporting the budget tonight. Sorry for the breaking news. I just think that a 6% lift on the Nashua taxpayer in this time is very difficult. I understand everything that's been said tonight. But let me back up for a second. I think that I do give the administration kudos, especially when it comes to, this is my fourth year on the Budget Committee, the timeline. It was mentioned that we wanted to get to work on this earlier, and I mean, we're a full month ahead of where we typically are, so I appreciate that. We didn't get the pretty budget book that we normally get, but that's the sacrifice that you make. I also want to commend the administration for carving out money for the SURF budget, $2.5 million. I mean, typically, we fund that through surplus dollars, so I think putting that into the budget, to me, made sense. On balance, however, like I said before, I think 6% is a lot. And throughout the budget season, I heard the word uncontrollable. And that didn't fit with me because, and I'm going to take some accountability here because I voted in favor of the contracts that are now coming through on this budget. But I would say that, in general, we make the rules for the city. We are a board of 15 people, and we are in control of the situation. I don't think the situation is in control of us. So I would just appreciate if we're going to say, let's just call it what it is, these are decisions that we made months ago, years ago, and now they're coming through. I know that may not square with everybody, and that's fine, but that's how I look at it. So I would just, those are just my comments overall, but I can't support a budget of a 6% lift. Thanks.
You're welcome. Alderman Thayer.
Thank you, Madam President. I also stand in opposition of the budget tonight. I'll just be short and sweet here. I share a lot of what my colleague from Ward 9 shares. I just feel a 6% lift on the taxpayers in Nashua is just too much for this time. So unfortunately, I will be a no.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm going to say this through, this question through you to anyone who can answer it. The budget's going up approximately 6%. Do we know what that equates to roughly for the tax rate?
We do have Ms. Enright on Zoom.
Could Ms. Enright maybe answer?
Dawn Enright, Treasurer, Tax Collector, thank you.
Can you get closer to your microphone, or we're having a harder time hearing you.
I apologize. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. That is going to depend on a lot of different factors. I mean, you've seen the tax rate setting spreadsheet, the mayor spoke about the county tax going up. That's going to affect the tax rate. So we have many different components, the assessed values, so it's really hard to put a finger on what it's going to increase it, but it will definitely increase the amount that is raised by taxation. It will. At this time, I really find it difficult to give you an exact number. I apologize.
Okay. Alderman Clemmons.
So my follow-up to that would be, the percentage-wise from last year, over last year, 6% higher. Does that mean that taxes are going to go up 6% or it's probably going to be less than that, correct?
Thank you. Dawn Enright, Treasurer, Tax Collector. It will be less than 6% increase to the taxpayer because you're going to have increased assessed values, which the total assessed values are against what needs to be raised by taxation. So I anticipate that it will be less than 6%, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to thank the members of the Budget Review Committee for all of the hard work that they've done. I've been on the Budget Review Committee, and I know how much work it is. I wasn't on it this year or last year, and I have had a lot more free time as a result. But I did watch all of your meetings, and, you know, I saw, you know, the questions that you asked, and I saw the answers given by the department heads, and I want to acknowledge the hard work that you did. I didn't agree with all the decisions you made, but, you know, you did the work, and so I'm going to support you, I'm not going to second-guess you because I think the difference was not that substantial. But I want to say, and I want the voters, you know, the people I represent, and, you know, all the citizens of Nashua to understand that, you know, this has been a particularly difficult time because in New Hampshire, we have elected representatives who have, over the years, and they're Republicans, and they're Democrats, and they're independents, and, you know, members of other, you know, third parties. I mean, they've all, you know, they've all cooperated, and we as voters have cooperated in the situation where, you know, New Hampshire prides itself on not having, you know, a broad I won't go into the whole history of it, but the truth is that what we are left with, and has become more and more so recently, is that, you know, the state has reduced taxes on businesses and wealthy individuals, the people who can most afford to pay taxes. The state has reduced the taxes on those people and has then turned to the cities and towns and said, we cannot support you in the way that we said we were going to, that the Constitution requires us to do, and that, you know, what we've done in the past, we can't continue doing that because our revenue has been reduced. Why is their revenue reduced? Because they've cut the taxes. They've cut the statewide taxes. Even when the Supreme Court told the state legislators that they had a constitutional, a state constitutional duty to provide an adequate education to all the students of the state, it doesn't matter whether you live in the state, doesn't matter whether you live in Nashua, you know, Portsmouth, Waterville Valley, Berlin, Claremont, it doesn't matter where you live, you, as a student, as a citizen of New Hampshire, are entitled to an adequate education paid for by the state. And so when presented with this dilemma that the state had, you know, of coming up with the money to pay for an adequate education, what did they do? They implemented a statewide education property tax. That statewide education property tax comes from we, the tax, the property taxpayers. So all they did was tack on a state property tax onto the property tax that the city charges. So, you know, the state didn't come up with additional money. And, you know, what they did is they increased the burden on the local property taxpayers. And now that, you know, they've, you know, they've come up with, you know, they've come up with ways of, you know, the, you know, different taxes that they've come, you know, the rooms and meals tax. When the rooms and meals tax was adopted, they said that, I think it was initially 40% of that money was going to be returned to the cities and towns. Well, it's now down to 20%. Because every time the state faces a budget crisis, they give less money to the cities and towns. They're doing the same thing now with the education freedom accounts. You know, they're taking money to, you know, support public schools. They're taking money from, that would normally go to public schools. They're giving it to people to then spend either in private schools, you know, or even homeschooling, or, you know, online schools. And, you know, that money that is supposed to go to public schools is being taken away. And that adds to the burden that the cities and towns have. It's a very unfair situation. And, you know, I'm looking at people, like, people in my ward who, you know, are struggling to try to keep up with this increase in taxes, and, you know, I don't know what to do. You know, when I ran, when I first ran, I ran on a platform of keeping Nashua, you know, a good place, you know, to live, work, play, and raise a family. And, you know, how do we do that? What makes Nashua a good place to raise a family? Number one, schools. You know? Secondly, make it safe. You know, good police force, good fire department. You know, keep up the structures, the infrastructure of the city. You know, public works. You know, not that long ago, our streets were falling apart. You know, under Mayor Donches and the then Board of Aldermen, before I was, became an Alderman, you know, adopted a plan to repave the streets. You know, that costs money. And so we've, you know, I think that we have done a good job. I think the mayor has done a good job, and we Aldermen, I think, have done a good job, you know, keeping the city a good place to live, a good place to raise a family. But the cost of doing that is being passed down to us. The only source of income that the city has is the local property tax. You know, the state doesn't allow us to make, to charge people who make a lot of money more than people who don't make much money. You know, we've tried to make an adjustment to, you know, by the exemptions for the elderly and the disabled, but we're limited there as well. So, you know, I understand, you know, that raising taxes is going to be a big sacrifice to people, and I can only, you know, we can't change the state tax system as Alderman, but I'm hoping that the citizens of New Hampshire are learning that the current state tax system is unsustainable, and I'm hoping that eventually they change it. And I'm hoping that the voters, you know, vote for people who are willing to change it. I'm hoping that the voters vote for people, you know, who are going to reverse some of these federal cuts that we're experiencing. And I'm hoping in a few years, things will turn around where we will have more support from the state, more support from the federal government, and we'll be able to, you know, reduce the burden upon our local taxpayers. But this year, you know, I can't vote, you know, to reduce the budget by, you know, how? Firing people? You know, firing teachers, firing policemen, firing firefighters, firing public works workers? We need those people to keep the city safe, to keep the city, you know, the infrastructure from falling apart. We need all of those people. And we can't say to those people, "Hey, we've got a solution. You know, we're going to cut your pay." That's how we can maintain you and keep Nashua a good place. We're going to pay you less. That's not right. That's not fair. So I'm going, I'm supporting tonight's budget, and, you know, those are the, that's my explanation and my confession of what a struggle it's been, and I'm sure all of us, you know, are trying to solve this problem, and we're doing the best we can, whether we vote for it or against it. You know, we've got the interest of our taxpayers at heart, and we're trying to do it the best way we know how. So, thank you.
Welcome. Mayor Donches.
Madam President, I do have an answer on this tax question.
Okay.
I believe Alderman Clemmons asked about the potential tax increase.
Yes.
Our modeling with the very, with the extraordinary items that I mentioned, which amount to $10 million, the health care, the county, everything, we're modeling a 6% tax increase. Now, that could be affected by our ability to reduce the county tax. That's another, the counties also pay more by the property taxes. But if we can get the delegation to reduce that, you know, maybe it'll be more in the neighborhood of five, and there, and it's, there's a plus or minus there. It might be a little less, but that's the, that's the real number we're looking at. But I would like to second and echo what Alderman Jettie said. I mean, yes, as Mr. Fiero said at the beginning, I said at the Budget Committee or at the public hearing, and I'll say now, property taxes are high. There's no question about it. But as Alderman Jettie has explained in some detail, that's the system we're given here. If the state were to meet the constitutional obligation, which was created by the New Hampshire Supreme Court under the New Hampshire Constitution, to pay for an adequate education, taxes would be reduced by 60. 60. Six zero, not 16, 60%. And if they were actually to take responsibility for the mistakes they made regarding the pension system and actually paid for those mistakes, it would reduce taxes by another 10%. Now, I know that there's been the idea of reducing the school budget by $2.5 million. That's the only idea I've heard that would have any material effect. That, were you to do it, would reduce the budget, you know, that would have a 1%, 1% in effect on the tax rate. Because $2.5 million equates to 1% on the tax rate. But to get there, you'd have to let teachers go. So, yes, as Alderman Jettie suggested, if you, and Alderman Tebow before that, if you wanted to reduce the workforce, he's whispering to me what to say, so.
Save the schools.
So if you want to, you know, achieve a 5% or a 10% decrease in the taxes, you're going to have to cut, you know, many, many employees, many. And so until, as Alderman Jettie was talking about, until we get a new system from the state of New Hampshire, until they begin meeting their legal obligations, you know, we're going to have high property taxes. And a good start would have been to not cut taxes for big corporations and wealthy individuals, which cost the state $400 million a year, and distribute that in the form of tax relief for middle-class, hard-working, working-class people through the property tax relief. That would have had an effect on property taxes, but instead, you know, they create a problem at the state level by cutting taxes for the big corporations and wealthy individuals and push more costs onto the cities and towns. So we really need help from the legislature. We've not been getting it. But back to the beginning, my, the projected tax increase we're looking at is 6%, unless we can get some significant help from the county delegation.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Tebow, did you still want to?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, to Alderman Jettie's point, it's, of course, it's a struggle, and, you know, I mean, I'm, you know, I have one salary raising five people or having five people in my house. So, you know, these taxes aren't exactly, you know, money I got just saved away to spend. So, you know, I have to look at my yearly budget myself and say, "What do I need to get done? What can I do? Where can I save money?" It stinks, but it's a different way of living, you know, where you have to kind of look at things and decide, you know, how are you going to do that? And I understand that there's some people that are even, you know, way worse off than me, that it's really going to impact them even more. So I do get that, and, you know, it's certainly a tough situation where we are today. You know, something that Alderman Lopez brought up about, I want to give kudos to the Board of Education and the Superintendent, which I don't usually do. They're probably laughing back there because I don't usually give them any credit. Everybody knows how I feel about some things that have come through there. And so for everybody that says, you know, I rubber-stamp things, I've been pretty hard on them when things haven't, have gone through here pretty easily on some things. And, you know, I went to that budget hearing, and to get that 3% guidance from us, I'm sure was tough. And I was hearing that, you know, 3% is going to equate to 77 jobs, and the Board of Aldermen wanted it that way. And so I had to go and speak there. I stood in line like everybody else, went to the podium, and I just said, that was a guideline. It wasn't exact, right? So tell us what you need so you don't lose jobs. And it was a pretty rough meeting, I'm not going to lie, but I got to sit back down and not have to participate in it. So they, you know, and Alderman Kelly, Alderman Kelly was right behind me. I just beat her to the podium. But, you know, I said, "Give us what you need to not lose jobs." And that's where they finally got, they actually went up to 4.75%. That got knocked down to 4.7, and they passed it. I knew it comes back here, it comes back to the mayor to then, to tinker with it, and I was glad where we got to the middle, right? So we got a compromise of 4%. So I could live with that. Even when they said 4.7, I said, "Oh, my God, how am I going to bring that back to the Budget Committee?" But the four was good, and I'm glad that that's where it ended up. And so, you know, they did a lot of work to try to make sure that they can still provide the services to the children of the city that they need to provide without cutting 77 jobs. And to the mayor's point, he said something about, you know, you'd have to cut staff with the $2.5 million. Part of the problem with that now is there's certain rules about when you have to tell people that they've lost their job for next year. That's already passed. So that's part of the problem with cutting that, and Superintendent Andre had explained that at the last meeting. And the last thing, to the people that say no to the budget, I don't have any problem with people saying no to the budget. The issue I always have is, it's easy to say no. "No, I'm not going to vote for this." But I don't hear much alternatives. "Yeah, it's too high. This budget's too high. I'm not going to vote for it." Easy, right? Then people say, "Hey, Alderman such-and-such said no," and they want to save us money. And I get it. Alderman Sullivan always does try to put stuff through. I'll give him credit, he does. But it's easy to say no. I want to hear, I would love to hear, "Let's go through this. Start cutting up stuff. Let's see where we can save." But we don't often see that. We just hear no's. So I think, I think it's much tougher to say yes to a tough budget that's going to be really tough for the city to deal with, but yet still give the services that people need. You know, I see that people shot down the parking garages, like, "Well, how are we going to fix the parking garages then if we don't spend money there?" Right? No one has alternatives. They just say no. I want to hear, "Well, how do we pay for them? And how do we cut this budget down without hurting services that really impact the city, including people's jobs?" Thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Alderman Tebow, for kind of setting that one up for me because you kind of gave me the layup for what I really wanted to say, which is, you know, I came in here sort of unsure whether or not I was going to dig my heels in on a relatively immaterial amendment that I had proposed at our wrap-up session. It's $50,000, and it kind of speaks to the illustrative property of the way you look at numbers. $50,000, if you stay it that way, sounds really good on paper. If you calculate it against the impact of this total budget, it's exponential fractions of a percent. To the same point, Alderman Sullivan's proposal for the Department of Education's budget, $2.5 million, which is sort of the, it's the magic number. It's 1% of the tax rate. Against the total amended budget right now, it's about half a percent. And the reason I voted against that at the wrap-up session, and Dr. Andre was on hand to sort of corroborate that, was an aspect of the education budget that we may not have as much of here in the city is nondiscretionary spending. There's certain things that we just have to spend money on, and it, I won't go into all the nuance that everybody else already has about why that money is dwindling, but the fact remains, we have to spend certain amounts of money for certain reasons in the Department of Education. And if we cut that $2.5 million and that nondiscretionary spending goes up, where do the cuts come from? And, you know, he sort of, he talked around the question, but with a nod to yes, that that could come from programs that I think people every year are fearful to lose, whether it's the arts or maybe athletics that don't get as much attention as others, or, you know, some other programs that bolster a public education. You know, Dr. Andre had said, you know, that what quantifies as a quality education, it's not much. And to Alderman Jettie's point, we make this city the best place that it can be, that it can be to live and to raise a family by bolstering that, by saying just enough isn't good enough. And, I mean, I have a kid in the schools, I agree. I don't want him getting just enough. I want him getting the best he can. But I'm not going to dig my heels in on that amendment tonight because, again, it's not going to change my tax bill, not materially. And, I mean, yeah, we could cut here, you know, $50,000 here, $100,000 here. We'd be here all night trying to add up to that magic number, that 2.5%. And I've been through this budget. I spent a lot of late nights with my nose buried in that binder, and I look around the room with the amendments that aren't flying, there's not much there. I mean, we hear a lot about, you know, pet projects or what have you. I think if they were there, we'd be talking about cutting them. I really do. I think I'd be proposing some myself, but the numbers really just aren't there, not enough to make a difference. That's all I've got. This is my least favorite meeting of the year.
Motion before us is for final passage of Resolution 25143 as amended by roll call. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So I've been listening to the debate this evening. I wasn't sure how I was going to vote this evening. I had, I was very pleased when the mayor came out and had a 4% increase in the education in the education budget, because if the school board does it right, they shouldn't have to lay anyone off with that amount of money. So that, and to me, and the rest of the budget represents the fact that we don't have to lay off anyone as well. And for me, that was a very important part of the budget. Where I'm getting hung up is the SURF money, the $2.5 million that we're funding into SURF. But I was thinking about that, and, you know, it's six to one half dozen the other. Meaning if we take it out here and then we fund it with surplus, then that's $2.5 million in surplus that then doesn't go back to the taxes anyway. So really, all you're doing is moving from, it's a shell game where you're moving one piece to another, and in the end, it equals the same amount of money. The difference is, though, is that keeping it in the budget will then allow us to better budget in future years. So beyond that, I really can't. I, I think my colleagues, a lot of my colleagues have stated some really good points, you know, and I will only say that for me, am I happy about a 6% tax increase?
No.
Potentially, no. But this is the consequence of, of other decisions made outside of this chamber, right? Made in Concord, decisions made in Washington, DC. You know, we could, we could decide to close a school. We could decide to close a fire department. We could decide to close or reduce the police. We could do that. And then that would fall in line with the, what the state's doing to us, right? That's, that's what the state would want us to believe to do, because they're giving us less and less money. So you would think they, they wanna force our hand and say, okay, well, you know, we're, we're not gonna give you as much. The federal government's saying, we're not gonna give you as much. So the decision now becomes on us, is do we, do we follow suit and say, well, I guess we're not getting as much money? So we better reduce our, we better reduce our spending and, and then go along with, with those cuts, despite the fact that, you know, it's detrimental to the community, and despite the fact that, you know, it goes against our values. Or the alternative is we vote for this budget, which was put together deliberately and purposefully by the mayor and the staff to do right by every citizen in this, in this city, and every taxpayer in this city, by carefully going line by line and seeing what is, where is it that we don't have to spend money and we can continue our values, right? And that came out to about 6% according to the mayor. It came to a 6% increase in, in the budget next year. Until we have changes in Concord, until we have changes down in Washington, DC, this is gonna continue. Because it's a, it's a, it's a cost shift, right? Or we could, we could vote for a new Alderman, certainly. We could vote for a new Board of Aldermen here if you don't like the decisions that were being made this evening or, or in general. But at some point, we have to make a decision, and we have to say, we're either gonna go along with the BS that comes down from Concord, where they're letting millionaires, you know, basically pocket what could have been real tax savings to, to us, to this budget. So with all of that said, I'm going to vote for the budget this evening. It's not without a lot of pause and hesitation, it's not without a lot of thought. I wanna thank the mayor for carefully crafting a budget. I wanna thank the Budget Committee for carefully going through this. It's quite the juxtaposition compared to, at the federal level, what DOGE did. So I, I think we should be proud of ourselves, and this is a budget that we should all be proud to support. Thank you.
Motion is for final passage as amended by roll call. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Gueva.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman TiVo.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
11 yays, 3 nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25-143 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of R-25-160, approving and authorizing execution of the First Amendment to purchase and sale agreement for a discontinued portion of Veterans Memorial Parkway right away in the execution of an initial lease thereof redevelopment of Mohawk Tannery.
Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of R-25-160.
You've heard the motion, is there a discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 25-160 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-165, authorizing the mayor to enter into a radio communications agreement between the City of Nashua and the Town of Merrimack.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25-165.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 25-165 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-167, authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into a contract with VaxCare to administer vaccines and receive an administrative fee.
Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of R-25-165.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25-167 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances. New business resolutions.
First reading of R-25-168, authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into a master development agreement with Lansing Melbourne Group LLC.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien and myself. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Finance Committee.
First reading of R-25-169, establishing a tax-deed property maintenance expendable trust fund funded by recovery of certain tax sale costs.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd, myself. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R-25-170, relative to the acceptance of grant funds pursuant to Contract Amendment Number 3 in the amount of $25,375 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into various public health and community services grant activities.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Senate, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Kelly and myself. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-25-171, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $400,000 of fiscal year 2025 unanticipated special education local-related revenue into Special Revenue Fund Number 2257, Special Education Local.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Senate, Alderman TiVo, Alderman Klee, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Kelly and myself. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Budget Review Committee. Board of Education, schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, June 23 at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R-25-172, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $500,000 of assigned fund balance into Fund 7025, City Retirement Expendable Trust Fund.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Klee. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, June 23, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R-25-173, relative to the acceptance of $25,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of State 2024 State Homeland Security Grant Program into Fire Grant Activity Hazmat Refresher Class.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Gueva, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Klee, Alderman Dowd and myself. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-25-174, authorizing the purchase and sale agreement of 44 Broad Street.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gueva. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Planning Board.
First reading of R-25-175, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $3,275,000 for Solid Waste Department fiscal year 2026 Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, SURF purchases.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, June 23, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. New business ordinances.
First reading of O-25-056, Rules for Remarks by Aldermen at Meetings.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Sullivan. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of O-25-057, Amendments to Death Benefits in the Board of Public Health, Board of Public Works Retirement System.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Moran, Alderman Gueva, Alderman Dowd and myself. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for general public comment, we have one person signed up, Paula Johnson.
My name is Paula Johnson, I've still survived being through this. I'm a little bit slow walking yet, and I still live at 15 Westbourne Drive. I just wanna say, as everybody can hear my accent, I came from New York, and we had taxes on everything, city, state, federal government taxes. We came home with no paycheck when I lived down there. I think that's a horrible idea, to put an income tax. People need to keep more of their money, not take it away. And the whole thing is, it's gonna reduce the property taxes, and we'll pay more for school, and we know when it comes to government, they lie. It never happens, they never reduce anything. So I was looking up, because I had a couple of words with a state rep from Ward 1, and she was talking to me at the State House when I went to testify for a bill. She talked to me about the lottery, but she got it all wrong. 28% of the lottery, remember, that was supposed to go for education, remember that? 28% goes to schools. 28%. So if you wanna start squawking about schools need more funding, talk why the lottery, we're only getting 28% for our schools. 60% is a payout, okay? It, I mean, it doesn't balance there. 6% is retail, that you pay your retail commission, 2% you pay administrative fees. You know, it, it just doesn't make sense. We're looking, how do we pay for education? And then we talk about, well, what about an adequate education? When I sat in the State House with Alderman Clemmons' mom, you know, she asked me to run, we had a great time. My, your mom and dad worked very well together. But the question becomes, we never talked about what an adequate education is. So what is an adequate education? We keep paying, but we don't know what it is. So until the legislature, and I don't care on which side of the aisle it is, you've got your Democrats, you've got your Republicans, you've got your Rhinos, you've got your uniparty people, nobody knows what an adequate education is. So we pay money, and we're hoping that we're educating the kids, because we have no guidelines really what an adequate education is. So I sit here and I listen, and, you know, Alderman Lopez, I'll take it that you and I talk to district, but it is the superintendent that gives the Board of Ed the budget. And then we look at the budget, it is his budget, and we have to say yea or nay, whatever we wanna do, just like all of you do. Yea, nay, how you gonna vote on a budget? So it is part of the district, the budget, the Board of Ed votes on it. We control the district to a certain percent, and the superintendent works for the district, and he works for the Board of Ed. You've been on this side of the aisle, I've been on both sides, and the state rep. So did I miss say it? Maybe I did, but you know what? It all comes down to the bottom line, you're spending our money. And I understand what's going on with the district, and I understand everything, but when your student population is dropping and you have no exit, um, survey to find out, why are, we need to bring kids back in, and we're not. We build apartment buildings. So I wanna say thank you again, everybody, and thank you very much, Ms. Graham, for the chair. It makes my life a lot easier. You all have a good night.
Remarks by members of the board? I'll start over here, Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. Keep it brief, and we had a lot of discussion around the budget. Two comments I had. One was to the public comment around Zoom attendance. It'll come as no surprise that I've always been proponent of that, and I found it disappointing that someone was unable to attend something because of that. We have Aldermen in this chamber who have traveled internationally, had issues with childcare, and have been able to be here. So just wanted to make that comment. Without getting geeky about tax rates, I was gonna talk about this earlier, but I held it. You can download from the state a spreadsheet that talks about every single municipal tax rate, and I find it really interesting, because it allows us to evaluate where we kind of fall within all of the different communities. So I polled last year, Nashville was 1590, Manchester was at 1958. High ends were closer to 30s and 40s. One of the things I love to point out for myself, growing up in Moltenborough, we're right next to each other on that rate. So Moltenborough's tax rate was $5.65, and that is because they have an incredible amount of assets from an estate perspective. So some of the things that are brought up in this chamber around the issues around how we raise money, that's, I'm a pro of that. We had 300 kids in our school department, 300 total. And that's why, you know, $5.65 is a reasonable rate for Moltenborough. I think for $15.90, whatever it's gonna turn out this year, we're right in the middle of the pack, and we provide incredible services here in the city. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, a few things, and very quickly. First, I wanna say that we do have professional people looking at our budgets, highly qualified, both the Board of Education or the Schools Department and the city, that helped the mayor factor the budget, and they deserve a lot of credit. The second is that, you know, we talk about major cuts to our budget. The City of Nashville has been voted the safest city to live in a couple times, and one of the best-run cities in the United States. Do we want that to go away? I don't think so. And I can tell you from attending the Police Commissioners' meetings, we don't want the Police Department to get reduced. If you saw the things that they put up with every single day, you'd be careful with the Police Department. And the Fire Department, just the last few days with accidents, where they're trying to go down and save people that have been in an accident, and houses are burning down, that they save the people that are in them and other things, you know. That's why we're one of the safest cities, so I wouldn't touch those. The other thing is, another thing is that the City of Nashville has a better bond rating than the United States government now. That's why we're one of the best-run cities. We're not losing money on, on our bonds. We have people that pay us to buy our bonds. How many cities and towns in Nashville, in New Hampshire have that? None. So another quick thing is, you know, we did a salary study, as did Manchester. So, another quick thing is, you know, we did a salary study, as did Manchester. Manchester put it on the shelf, because they took one look at it and says, oh shit, we can't afford it. We're doing the same thing. People are complaining about how much we're paying our employees. According to the studies that were done by professionals, we're underpaying everybody. So, you know, that's something else to consider. And as far as our schools are concerned, I'm a board member on the Brian McCarthy Foundation, and we just gave several scholarships out, several thousands of dollars. And I wasn't on the committee to select them, but I've heard, I've seen their resumes. These kids are outstanding. Not only are they very brilliant, but are going forth in education to help the citizens of the United States. These are really smart kids, and they come out of our school system here in Nashville. So, the only other thing I'm going to mention is, I have a little experience with budgets. I've been involved with city budgets for over 16 years, in both the Board of Education and the Board of Aldermen, so, you know, I spend a lot of time on it, and I agree with all the comments that were said.
Alderman Clee.
Thank you, Madam President. First off, I want to say that I have a number of constituents who have come up to me that have been attending the City Academy, and for citizens who want to learn about what the city does and the services that they offer, they don't have to listen to us sit here and espouse what the city does and what the city offers. Attend the City Academy, because they'll learn, they'll learn what legal does, they'll learn what DPW does, they'll learn all that the city offers, and to what my at-large colleague said, for the $5.90 that Moltenborough takes in taxes, they don't offer the services that we do. I'm sure they don't have trash pickup, I'm sure that they don't have all of this type of thing, I'm sure they don't have the solid waste, they don't have probably the sewer there that we have, and so on. So, go to City Academy, go to the Police Academy type of thing that we offer here, because we actually teach what city does, what our city offers. We have transparency here in the city. We want to show what the City Clerk's Office does, what are, what services are offered here. And it's going on right now, so I know you can't kind of jump in in the middle, but it's an eight-week program. I've had some of my constituents that have gone through it more than once, because they actually enjoyed it that much. And they, I, it's been good. I know my husband went to it, and he came back and said to me, wow, he was absolutely impressed by it. And I kind of went to a couple of them, and I was impressed. So, it really is, it's worth learning, and I'm going to even say to the Aldermen here, I know we've all gone and met with many of the, many of the directors, so. And the other thing I want to speak to, and I'm, I know our president kind of helped educate me on this as well, there was an article in the New Hampshire Journal that, I don't know if many of you have seen this, and it was rather disturbing, on Penachuk Water. It made it sound like Penachuk Water was being sold to a company that bought a piece of land on, I think it was Northwestern Boulevard. No, ain't happening. Nobody is buying Penachuk. It, the city is still the sole shareholder, it ain't for sale. They bought a piece of property, right now, that company has met with many utility companies, including Penachuk. They will eventually be buying water for Penachuk. Penachuk cannot say, no, we're not going to give you water. This company does, in fact, bottle water. Iced tea, it's going to be no different than the Budweiser plant. They technically sell water, granted, it's alcoholic water, but it is water. It's not much different than that, but it is water, just in a different form. So for everybody who's all upset that this Chinese company is bottling water, iced tea, it's no different than that. So, the New Hampshire Journal did not do a very good job in their article, and if you go to the Penachuk website, there is a letter that they put on their website, please go and read it. It explains everything, it's a very quick read, and I'm sorry that New Hampshire Journal did not do a very good. The patch kind of reprinted that letter, they did, Mr. Bowers did, did speak to it as well, but, and, Madam President, thank you for setting the record straight for me, and thank you, Alderman Jettie, for reaching out to me as well, I did appreciate that. Thank you.
Alderman TiVo.
Thank you, Madam President. As far as the Zoom issue goes, I've been on record that I would, I would have voted to get rid of it altogether, so. I was, I would have been more than happy to. I've used it a couple of times when I've been contagious, COVID, or pink eye, or whatever I had, but generally, I would be against it just totally, so. So, I just want to thank everybody, the Budget Committee, from the mayor down to every department head, because it, a city budget is extremely complex, as we've, we all learn, and it's hard to know everything about it, there's just too much. I will, I will ask this question in rhetorical form, but I, you know, I never want to put him on the spot in the chamber, but if you could maybe tell me afterwards, if the 2.5 million would have gone through, would you still have supported the budget or not? You can tell me, you don't have to say yes or no here. But I would be curious, just because, would that have been enough to push it in that direction? You know, again, I'll say, you know, the, I was proud of the work the Budget Committee did, I was proud to get the only negative number amendment on the board, even though it was a washout of another ad, but I was still, still proud to get that through. But I will say, I'll reiterate, the no vote is, is fine if there's a different alternative. It's easy when we're walking, canvassing for our elections and going, hey, I didn't support the budget. And people are like, oh, great, you know, that's great, you didn't support it. But what's the alternative? And if you go into a door where you're knocking on a firefighter's door, or a teacher's door, or a policeman's door, or public work, you know, person's door, you know, they may think differently of that, because obviously, they'd want it support, like to Alderman Dowd's point, we don't, we don't pay enough, in my opinion. But, you know, you've got to balance it somehow, so. I would be curious, like, what other alternatives were there? I'm always open to look at different alternatives. I may not end up agreeing with it, but I like that something else is out there for us to look at, so I could say, hey, let's chip away at that, or chip away at that. You know, in the State House, the one side had a budget, and the other side came with a different budget. Now, that budget lost out, but at least there was an alternative for people to look at, and if they wanted to, you know, vote for that, they could have, or take pieces of it, or whatnot, so. But thank you for everybody involved, thank you for Alderman Dowd for running the committee. I know it's a taxing one to run, and then doing that last meeting is always, at the school is always a tiring one, so thank you.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. So, speaking of budgets, the federal budget reconciliation bill just passed the Congress and the House of Representatives by one vote, was a one-party vote. And, you know, we've, I talked last time about some cuts to Medicare or Medicaid that they want to do, but there's some fine print in there that I think people should know about, because these are pretty extreme measures that are contained within that, ostensibly, you would think it was a budget bill, that really have nothing to do with the budget. And so this has come from an article that was on prospect.org, and I'm just going to go through some of these, because I think, I think our citizens should know, because it's not being discussed on any mainstream news that I, that I could see, but these are, these are definitely things that are happening. One is that they're looking to basically prohibit any funds from being used to carry out court orders that would hold executive branch employees in contempt of court. Now, what that would mean is that if those people, let's say, worked for Homeland Security, and they sent a bunch of people out to the Gulag and wherever, after picking them up off the street, then a judge said, we're going to hold you in contempt, well, this would say you can't do that. And this would be passed by that. This is a, this is a first step in dismantling our democracy, right? So, the next thing is, and this is probably a popular one, New Hampshire's one of these states where you can file your taxes for free online now, they're going to take that away. That's in the, that's in the budget. So, they're saying they're going to save you money, but really, now you're going to have to pay to fire your taxes. So, you know, one of the other things is, that's in there, we're going to hold, this is going to allow us to hold the children of migrants indefinitely in detention. Would allow it, just, could be a U.S. citizen, but if they're a child of a migrant, well, we're going to hold them, this would allow them to hold them indefinitely. It also would make families pay to get their children back, and it would make them pay to seek asylum. So if you come to seek asylum at the border, you have to pay a thousand, excuse me, you have to pay $1,000. This is a big one. This one, this one affects me and affects a lot of, a lot of people, anybody that works for a nonprofit. Basically, if, this would give the President the power to strip a nonprofit of its nonprofit status if it, quote, "supports terrorist organization." Now, that is a very broad, very broad brush statement, but it essentially would allow them to, to get rid of Harvard's nonprofit status, if you were a credit union, and you were, you know, you're, part of your lobbying arm was trying to get something that, or trying to get the administration to do something different, they could pull your nonprofit status. If you were a nonprofit that just advocated for something against the administration, they could say, well, you know, maybe that's, maybe that's indirectly supporting terrorists, we're going to pull your, your nonprofit status. Now, you could argue, right, well, that's ridiculous, whatever, why, that wouldn't hold up in court, and maybe it wouldn't, but it certainly would cost you a lot of money to go through and fight it. A lot of money to go through and fight it. You know, some of the other things in here, we're gutting estate tax. Basically, this is something that mostly millionaires pay, but this is going to now allow up to almost $30 million of tax-free for anybody who, who, you know, inherits up to that amount. They don't have to pay taxes on it, up to $30 million. Anybody in this room going to inherit $30 million? Probably not. But, if you are, you don't have to pay taxes on it anymore, if this passes. And then probably the thing that, that will, a lot of parents will not like, is that it's going to lower the eligibility income threshold for the child tax credit. So, while we're giving away millions of dollars to those who inherit money from their parents, those who rely on the child tax credit, well, you better hope you earn a little bit of that inheritance, because you're, we're going to raise that tax credit threshold. So, the other thing is, the last thing is, and people in New Hampshire, probably some of the Republicans in New Hampshire love this one, we're going to give out money in this bill to create tax shelters from paying capital gains to donors who donate to school voucher schools, voucher programs. So, we're not giving the same to a donor who donates to a public school, but if you donate to a private school or voucher school, then the capital gain threshold is even higher now. So again, another corporate giveaway that benefits the rich. These are some of the things that are in here. I could go on and on and on, and, you know, but I, I won't, but these are some of the things that are contained in that big, beautiful bill, that the President goes out there and touts. This is going to harm people. It is not going to help people, it's going to harm people. And like I said in the budget discussion that we were having earlier tonight, all of these things have a trickle-down effect. You talk about trickle-down economics, this is trickle-down government. They're going to, they're going to basically hoard money up at the top, let the billionaires and millionaires in this country hoard money at the top, and we're going to be left with whatever. And that's going to start affecting our local property taxes, it already has. It already has, you saw it tonight, we passed a budget, it's going to cost you 6% more than it did last year. That's because the legislature in New Hampshire, and the legislature in the Congress are making decisions that make it more expensive to live in the United States. It's not because of the decisions that we're making here, we want a safe community, we want police, we want fire, right? I want to know that when the, my house is on fire, I can call 911, and the Fire Department's going to show up. I don't think that's too much to ask for. I want a really good education for my child. I don't think that's too much to ask for. So, you know, we can, we can have a discussion about this, but essentially, this is a giveaway to millionaires, this big, beautiful bill. And I, and it's going to have harm, real, real harm, to everybody that is an immigrant or doesn't make a lot of money.
Madam President, could we have order in the chamber?
Could we have water?
Oh, there's somebody laughing at his cell phone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to hear the speakers, not listen to somebody laughing in the background.
If you're going to be disturbing the proceedings, can you take your cell phone to the lobby? Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you very much. I wasn't going to say anything, but I, it was my understanding that our code of conduct says that we shouldn't question whether, how an Alderman votes, but I guess I was called out, so I'll respond. I, you know, I do think voting no, simply saying no to anything is easy. However, so, this is my fourth year voting on the budget, and I voted against three out of the four. Every single year, I propose a cut. It's not just a willy-nilly million bucks. I put together a crooked number, and I back it up with logic of where I think it's going to come from. I had other cuts, and should I continue in this role, and I should continue on budget, I will continue to do it. I woke up at 1:00 in the morning, German time, to sit there and put my amendment forward, because that's how strongly I felt about it, and it was difficult. It's difficult to say, it's easy to say no, it's really difficult to come back and say, when you have 12 sets of eyes staring at you, saying, this guy's an idiot, and doesn't know what he's talking about, and then, and then, make a cut to schools. The biggest thing, the third rail in this city. So, I'm not going to step over nickels to pick up pennies, I don't want to do that. I want to go and make it count, so at the end of the day, I can at least say, yes, I said no, however, I did have an alternative. And I did, and I always do, and I always will. And I did, and I always do, and I always will. And I'm going to keep doing it. I think there are hard decisions that need to be made. I admit it. Okay, I took accountability. I voted for a lot of those contracts. I did. And now, we're paying for it now. But I believe strongly in what I did. I had more cuts available, but I said, I'm going to see how this one goes, and if it doesn't go the way I think it's going to go, I'm just going to stop there. Not going to waste any more time. I didn't make any more tonight, because the work needs to be done in committee. I believe that. So once it was done, I said my piece, and that was it. I moved on. I'm going to end on a positive note. I thought that Memorial Day parade yesterday was fantastic. The crowds were exceptional. I was amazed at how many people stand out in front of Seminole Plaza. I didn't realize that that seems to be the congregating point for everybody. It was fantastic. So I just, you know, kudos to everybody that came out, and, you know, we cooperated with the weather, obviously, but it was amazing. And I think it's great that Nashua comes out to honor the, you know, the soldiers, the women and men of this country that, you know, made the ultimate sacrifice to get us where we are today. So, thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to start by taking a moment to acknowledge the passing of John Burkett. He was a community member who contributed a lot to the city of Nashua. He was one of the founders, the founder, really, of Gate City Bike Co-op. I first met him over a decade ago at the soup kitchen, where he was asking, you know, do you think people would use bikes if I was able to kind of recondition them? I'm really, I really like repairing bikes. And we had just finished running a bike program. Our donor was struggling with health issues and was no longer able to do it, so I was like, absolutely. And John didn't stop at just building bike after bike after bike after bike. He engaged other people. He turned it into an education program. He taught other people how to do it. He helped them with vocational opportunities. And I'm sure there are hundreds of people who turned their lives around, because they could take a bike to work, and they could get their lives back on track. So I just wanted to acknowledge John Burkett. I also wanted to respond to some of the comments that were made at Public Comment. My opinion is, it's a really weird hill to die on, but any member of the public who's interested in actually watching the Board of Education's discussion, can clearly see a whole presentation and a formal budget by the superintendent that is significantly less than they voted for, and that was the point of the meeting. The point was Superintendent Andre did his best to meet the mayor's goal of keeping it 3%, and presented on how much harm doing that would cause, closing a school, cutting 70 positions. And he came back with what he thought the Board of Education could make work, and that was his presentation. And the Board of Education really did soul-searching and decided they needed to push for more. That was proposed was not really the superintendent's proposal, and to his credit, as a professional, he came and presented it to us here in the budget, what it would look like if he was able to have 4.7%, because the Board of Education does approve that. It is their role, and he did support what they were doing. If it's the opinion of some that the school superintendent controls the Board of Education, I would argue that was clearly not the case, but I would invite anybody else to watch that. I would also note that, as one of the previous speakers, my fellow alderman had said he would vote against, he would vote for removing Zoom. The speaker who advocated for Zoom in this meeting herself is on record as advocating for removing Zoom. So it's interesting to see how people don't want to give somebody something else until they need it, and then it's a right. Thank you.
Alderman Gavell.
Thank you, Madam President. So I just want to piggyback on what my colleague from Ward Nine added. When the budget comes out every year, I might be quiet on here, give limited remarks. I'm not trying to bog down a meeting, especially when I feel this board has come up with an opinion, a consensus of which way to go. Every time we get the budget, I believe Alderman Sullivan and I were up to two dinners, a round of golf, and about a half dozen phone calls on this budget. So this was a pretty good one for us. We came up with just a list of different ideas, and went back and forth on what we could do to present that alternative budget. Because I do agree, I think if you're going to go against it, you should have an alternative. I think that's a very fair thing to say. We see it up at the State House with their minority and a majority budget. So I think the work did go in there. I definitely understand, after proposing one cut, why he wouldn't go through with the rest of the list that we came up with, but I understand that as well. So I do think the work is going in, and I think we do come up with a product and an alternative that would be beneficial to the city and the taxpayers in it. Thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I would say that I had something else to say, but then everyone talked. But no one has to explain their votes. We've all been elected to vote the way we feel best. And my colleagues to my right, they ran on a platform to reduce spending, and they just honored that. So I understand that it can be a difficult pill to swallow, but that's how they ran their platform. I obviously voted for the budget. But other than that, I would like to wish my sister, she, congratulations, she graduated from Middlesex Community College with her associate's degree in paralegal studies, going on EMS Lowell for, which I believe is public health. So both my alma maters, and hopefully she goes to BU for a master's degree, if higher education exists by then. Where can we get tax money to pay for schools and everything else? Legalize marijuana. I wish Governor Ayotte would come out and just say that she would sign that bill. I actually recently spoke to Representative Osborne at an event, and we discussed how we frequently see New Hampshire plates at the dispensary in Tinsborough, some of which have been state rep plates. But I think it's important to identify the people in New Hampshire, they go across the border, they spend this tax money in Massachusetts or all the other surrounding states, and it's not coming back in to the state of New Hampshire. And we have sin taxes. I get the whole morality piece about, very silent, the whole morality piece about smoking cigarettes, keno, gambling. Let's add marijuana onto that. It's a way that someone's making a choice who's a legal age, and then we can get some of that tax money back. That'd be great. I was upset about an article from In-Death, In-Depth, New Hampshire? Is that the one? That's the liberal one. This guy, I don't know his name, but he talked about how, it was, he used FreeStaters as this boogeyman thing about rezoning to allow manufactured homes. And what an absurd thing to do, because I think manufactured homes, people should absolutely be able to have access to those anywhere they want, and should be able to build them. To say that they're being used for low-cost housing to get FreeStaters to come in here, so what? People need to live, and live affordably. So I did see that article. I thought that was a little tone-deaf. Manufactured homes would be great, no matter where they are, in any city or town, they should be built. And that's the American dream now, because you can't get a start at home, so let's build some manufactured homes. All right. It is way too quiet in here. Due process, piggybacking off of some of the things my colleague at large has said. One of the things I do in my professional life, as everyone knows, I don't practice social work here, is that I'm a forensic social worker, and I'm deeply involved in multiple states' criminal cases. And what I see time after time is the defunding of the law, basically, the judicial branch. And we have folks who are stuck in jail. Valley Street, for example, needs to be just re-hauled. The people are working there in, like, horrible conditions. People are housed there in horrible conditions, and they can't get in front of a judge, because we keep reducing budgets on county attorneys, federal attorneys for the federal cases that are being heard in New Hampshire, and people are taking plea deals when they're innocent. Just a couple months ago, a gentleman in Nashua was held for two and a half years at Valley Street Jail until he got a jury trial. The judge granted a witness who was known to have lied under oath immunity. That lying witness got this person held for two and a half years. The jury found them not guilty. He lost two and a half years of his life. We're defunding the law on all ends, and the point of due process is to keep the executive branch and the police force at the furthest edge possible to not infringe on our civil liberties. And it's happening from the federal all the way down to the state. And if we are serious about making sure people have access to due process, we need to start local and build up federally, because there are too many people who are getting jailed and held pre-trial, who have just given up their civil liberties so they can get out on an easy parole. And then violation of probation, you pick up a petty offense, then you're right back in, you're serving your full five years, whether the charge is. Some of that doesn't make sense, probably Alderman Jettie gets it. Corporation Counsel probably gets what I'm talking about.
I get it.
Alderman. But I, on top of advocating at the federal level for more funds to the judicial system and public defenders, we should also be doing that here. And to the most impactful point I will make about what is happening, the county attorney has recently decided that he wants to pull the prosecutors from the drug and mental health courts. That will lose their certification, and then we're going to be back 10, where we were 10, 15 years ago, with folks who are being held on petty drug offenses who have an addiction, because the prosecutor doesn't want to participate in the mental health or drug court process. It's happening locally, we can do something about it locally. I hope everyone here will email the county attorney and say, please, don't do that. That's bad for Nashua. Fingers are crossed. And then with that, the Pride Parade is on June 21st. Please come out and march. I won't be here. I'll be traveling this year. But I hope everyone can enjoy another great parade.
You had a letter on your desk this evening from the school district. They are looking for an alderman to serve on their strategic plan steering committee. They'll meet six times throughout the summer, on Wednesday afternoons from 4:00 to 6:30. So it's not a huge commitment. I mean, if you're around, you know, in the summer from 4:00 to 6:30, I'm sure they would appreciate if someone from this board would step up and participate with them in their strategic plan.
I nominate Alderman Timmons.
Okay. Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien, committee announcements.
Yeah, this week, I do have a meeting coming up on Wednesday, Joint Meeting Committee on Infrastructure and the Board of Public Works for the VPW garage for their trucks. That will be at 5:30 in the automatic chamber. Then, at 7:00, there'll be a regular meeting of the Committee of Infrastructure in the automatic chamber. And that's it for now.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you. Next week, on Thursday, June 5th, at 7:00 p.m. here in the automatic chamber, is the Planning, Economic, and Development Committee meeting. We'll also be having some public hearings then, as well.
Any other committee announcements? Alderman Kelly.
Personnel and administrative affairs will meet Monday, 7:00 p.m. in the aldermanic chamber. We will be having a discussion on the salary study that was done, discussion, not presentation. I imagine that this will be an ongoing discussion on many things that came up this morning on budget. So I invite anyone who can attend to come hear our initial discussion.
All right. Alderman O'Brien.
Yeah, Madam President, if I may, just to help out my good friend Alderman Dowd, there is Thursday, the 29th, Budget Review Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Public hearings, okay. And you called on me for a particular reason, so let me accommodate you, if I may. I would like to make the motion that the May 27, 2025, meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We adjourn at 9:35. Thank you, everyone.